It's disconnected.
We did, I'm sorry.
James Sanunu.
Oh, oh, I see, right, yeah, he's gonna, he. Tell us who's gonna come.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we good to go? Ready to go? Oh, maybe get that again. Very good, and I understand, uh, James Sanunu was.
Connected.
He is connected, was connected?
Is this YouTube instead of Zoom?
This is on YouTube.
Well, he was going to.
He's doing, right.
Zoom because we asked him.
No, I understand, but I was pointing out that we're on our YouTube screen instead of Zoom.
Right, there it is. Let's make sure, uh, James, are you there? Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you, thanks.
Alrighty, thank you. Alright, well, let's go ahead and get going. It is, uh, Wednesday, nineteen November twenty twenty-five, and this is a regular meeting of the Water Valley Select Board. I am Rich Mee to the Chair, and here with me today is Wendy Rathkeberg, Vice Chair and Dan Bancroft, Select Board Member. So we have a quorum. I see a couple of folks here in the, uh, in the audience, the physical audience, uh, is there anything in the agenda that you'd like to, that's not an agenda that you'd like to bring the attention to board under privilege of the floor?
Uh, yes, I would.
Please introduce yourself and have at it.
Jim DeRocher from the Black Bear Lodge.
Would you mind, yeah, we got a lot of complaints about people not being able to hear or see.
Okay, well.
Questions.
Jim DeRocher from the Black Bear Lodge. I'm told the transfer station staff that the pickups are down to once per week for garbage. They can't tell me which days the driver's responsible for other responsibilities. The person couldn't tell me for certain that waste disposal will happen once per week regardless. If someone else, something else comes up, the driver's responsible for, they'll be doing that like snow re- removal. Consistent waste management is essential to the health of any town. The lack of service will become a public health issue. Regular garbage pickups keep the town clean, reduce the spread of infection, keeps the vermin population in check, and the town's people healthier. According to the WHO, exposure to improperly managed waste disposal can result in health issues, including respiratory infections, gastrointestinal infections, spreads of cold and flu. Um, also, it probably stopped any illegal dumping. The management of the transfer station must be considered a priority and not an afterthought like it feels to me. The state requires the town follow regulations and rules to prevent impacts on public health. The once-per-week pickup, not knowing when the pickup will occur, will become a hardship for businesses, especially in the upcoming season. I'm told we can look elsewhere for waste management, but we still have to pay the town for the lack of service. Also, I also can bring garbage collected at my business that can't fit in my dumpsters, but that means additional costs to me. We pay an awful lot for garbage. Um, and the town has taken that on. Um, you employ sizable staff and only have one person responsible for picking up waste management, shows a lack of vision concerning such a vital service to the community. Ordnance twenty and twenty-one regarding waste management seems vague and doesn't show any possibility to alternative waste management. Um, thoughts, might want to hire a third party for the time being, um, until you can get your staff squared away, I don't know. Some New Hampshire towns also allow rebates for people who take care of their own garbage. Ordinances are so vague, I don't know if that's a fact. So I just wanted to bring that up to you. It's a major concern, the holidays are coming up. Um, and if garbage is lying around, it's in our buildings, we're gonna create um, environmental hazards that'll not be good for our guests, not be good for our owners, not be good for townspeople. Thank you for your time and indulgence.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, we do intend to discuss this under, uh, Department Head Updates, the one day a week. So you're welcome to stay and listen to it, or listen to it later, watch it and come back at us at another time.
I'll watch it, but yeah, please, I mean, it's imperative.
Sure, we understand that.
You know, I can be fined if I got stuff outside, but if I can't put it in the cans, you know, I can't leave it in my building, because it's just, it's a health hazard.
Okay.
And i- it's imperative that you guys take this seriously. To the people I spoke to at the, um, at the transfer station, didn't sound like it's all that serious.
All right, we'll check on it.
I appreciate it.
I said we'll be discussing it later in the meeting. All right.
Thank you for your indulgence.
No, thank you for coming.
Have a good day.
Okay, if there's no more privilege of the floor, uh, shall we go to minutes, minutes review? Did anyone have any comments? I think they're the three October and the first November.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything, uh, do you want to do them one by one, uh?
However you guys want to do them.
I really only had one, uh, I, I, the eleven-five had, I didn't get a really a chance to do eleven-five, but I got the three October ones.
Yeah, my, my goal had been to get the October.
Yeah, that's how I understood it, so I kind of put them aside to get back to them, but I never did.
Yeah, I had passed just a few comments with respect to consistency of things like town manager should be capitalized and town and state in the context of state of New Hampshire and such. Um, other than that, there was only one other comment I had, and I think it was fifty-five steps, right, if we know?
Uh, it's three for.
Three for October and one for November.
Focusing on the October.
Then it would be in the, I think, third one. There was a comment.
So is that October?
Twenty-second, is that the twenty-second?
Where it said, Rich said they would like meet with them, and they is really the select board. You were referring, I believe,
That we would, right, that we, we, instead of they.
But it.
Right.
But it, the way, it was hard to tell the context. You didn't get select board out of there.
Yeah.
So it should have been reworded to be, you know, Rich said the select board.
Okay, could that be a?
But other than that, I thought they were fine. Um, you know, adequate detail, maybe a little bit verbose, but that's okay.
Okay, great, yeah.
So I would move that we accept.
Well, which?
Yeah, well, I think, see if we had any, uh, comments. Uh, no, I just had, uh, two general comments. One is I, I still having just a little trouble following the Director's reports. I see we went from one run-on paragraph to a separate paragraph, but if we could just uh, label the beginning of the paragraph like, uh, DPS.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, DPW.
I'm, I'm gonna be sitting with Jen this week.
Okay, that would just make it a little bit easier read, but the accuracy was, was fine, and, uh.
I agree with that, actually, that change.
Okay, good. Um, they, they did strike me. I, I know we're looking for a balancing, and we've been bouncing around in this. They did strike me as a bit on the verbose side. I think, you know, we could say a lot less and therefore be a lot less work for Jen and for you. So I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. Yep.
Yeah, no, I agree, and I, I think there is, has definitely been that struggle in finding, finding the rhythm, but from, I spoke with Kristen earlier in the week, and you indicated that there is an AI program that's been successful for the planning board minutes that you can help Jen with this week.
Instead of trying to send it back.
Yeah.
Which more that we have.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent.
So the one that wasn't on here was, uh, which was sent to you was ten-three, which was a very short one. It's like a one pager most.
Oh, yeah.
Did we, are, we did not, uh?
And I looked through all the previous meetings, I didn't see that you approved them in any other meeting, you know, so you felt so, but I didn't have it anywhere. It was a special, and it was like a one pager, it wasn't.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's probably why it's.
Well, I'm willing to go forward with the ten-three, ten-eight, ten-fourteen. Oh, twelve-one, sorry.
Twenty-two.
Ten-twenty-two. Yeah, I'm looking at last.
Here.
Last time, I got, I got it, thank you. Yeah, ten-eight, ten-fourteen, and ten-twenty-two. Uh, moving forward, um, with those minutes, did you have something?
No, just, I guess the ten-three is one that Kristen has just indicated. Did you get a chance to read that? So was this not sent separately, or was just sent in the package?
In the past?
Just because with the agenda, ten-three isn't listed on.
Yeah, that's Steve did the agenda, so I didn't have a chance to, but he had questioned that one, but I looked through all the things and I didn't see that one.
Yeah, I didn't have any, I didn't have any, yeah, but I think you sent five.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, uh, four of them I, I reviewed, that must be the ten-three. The one I didn't review was the eleven-five.
Yeah.
Okay, so if someone like to make a motion, are we good?
Good, so, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from ten-three, twenty-five, ten-eight, twenty-five, ten-fourteen, twenty-five, and ten-twenty-two, twenty-five, as amended.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we'll come at the eleven-five, and I think Kristen, you mentioned in the email, we'll be adding this meeting to that for the next. Okay, that's fine. Alrighty, let's move on to, to new business. Uh, our agreement with Con, uh, the Conway Fire Department, uh, for their coverage of a portion of Waterville Valley up by the Can Comagus highways. Chief Noyes, would you like to, to say anything about it?
No, uh, other than it's just an agreement that we've had for a number of years now that allows them to uh, cover calls just in the one mile stretch of highway, which includes Sabida Falls.
Yeah. That's in Waterville Valley.
Uh, that is in Waterville Valley. Uh, they have occasion to, to go there once, twice, three times a year.
I imagine, it's very popular, yeah.
Um, and, uh, of course, you can understand the challenges that we would have to respond there. Uh, Conway already covers, uh, Albany and their section of the Can Comagus, so just adding an extra mile to their territory isn't that big a stretch for them, so, uh, this agreement uh, just renews, it's a three-year agreement, we just renew it, uh, every three years. Uh, they'll send us a bill, uh, for any calls that go out uh, at the end of the year, along with the night first reports that shows us which calls that they responded to. It's not that we won't respond out there if there's like a, uh, long search and rescue, or any sort of extended incident, uh, but this is for, uh, regular initial calls to, to that area.
Very good. Any comments from the board?
No.
Oh?
No, I thought that was fine.
Uh, make a motion to go ahead and, uh, renew the three-year agreement we have with Conway, New Hampshire with regard to, uh, emergency coverage. Uh, that part of Waterville Valley, that one mile stretch, uh, along the Can Comagus, Can Comagus Highway, way up in the northeast corner of the, of the town.
A second minute?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you have something else for us to sign, Chief, uh?
Uh, I thought it was included with your packet. If, if it isn't, I will print one off.
Uh, it may have been.
It's, it's in here, but not.
Not, not the printed version to sign.
I will get one printed by the time, the end of the meeting.
Okay, well, we'll be, we'll be, uh, we'll be, uh, together again and a non-meeting on Friday, so.
Yeah, I can do it, and just print it, it'll, it'll take us that time.
Very good. All right, let's move on to the next, uh, topic in new business. Uh, Mark's wife, uh, Nancy has reimbursed the town uh, for, uh, the expenses that the town incurred for Mark's celebration of life ceremony. And, um, I think she would like to, she would like to, in effect, repay the town. However, I think, uh, as we, we can discuss it here, but I think rather than use it to pay the invoices for the town expenses, that we, uh, donate the funds, uh, to some, to some effort, some cause, uh, we can decide on exactly what later, but, uh, for their interim, I think just a motion to put the money in. I guess it would be, uh, undesignated. Trying to remember the exact terminology. Steve isn't here today, he's at a conference, but Kristen, do you remember what the exact, uh,
Dispaid.
Unanticipated funds in, into that line, into that, uh, revenue line. Thank you, Dylan.
Yes.
And then we can decide at some point later exactly, uh, how we'd like to, uh, expend those, those funds.
Right, because just to note, she was not actively billed for those. She sought out the expenses and decided to reimburse the town.
Right. So, yeah, exactly, it was initiative on, on, on her part, exactly, we did not, we did not send her anything.
Right.
Okay, so, um, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, uh, I'm looking for the exact amount, I mean, to be.
Thought we had accepted this earlier.
Ten thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I don't think we actually had the amount, we just wanted to get the response, so, uh, to, uh, e- accept as, uh, unanticipated funds, uh, ten thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents from Nancy Dakota, uh, and to put those into our miscellaneous revenue account or uh, unanticipated funds to decide later, uh, how to expend those funds.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so, let's move on to the DES, uh, dam bureau guidance, uh. Megan, would you like to, I see you've given us some, some, a little bit of paperwork here, and we had some in our packet, but would you like to start this discussion off, please?
So, back when we had our inspection, I can't speak to the date exactly, um, but during the summer when we had our inspection, um, it was told to me that we should in the winter, because I asked about, you know, what best practices are in the wintertime, just because, you know, I didn't have a lot of familiarity with the dam. Um, and just having those conversations and having a contact within the dam bureau, um, at least how that relationship started. Um, and they said, well, you know, it is recommended to, um, go down about two feet, um, and back when we started having discussions for winter and, um, finding out where that guidance, you know, um, came from, I'd emailed them a little over a month ago. Um, they just got back to me last week, um, and they sent us the OMR, which is a operating, you know, basically.
Yeah, specifically, it's the operation, maintenance, and respond, response, so.
And so that was submitted by a consulting agency to the dam bureau, uh, that specifically.
On behalf of the town.
On behalf of the town, that specifically states that we would, starting November first, draw down the water two feet, which the level of which that we keep the pond is at fourteen seventy-five, and you can also go back.
It's the elevation, I'm sure people who are listening understand, the contour, the elevate, which is the property line.
Which is the property line.
Almost, right.
Um, you can actually go back in a slideshow that is on the town website that happened after Irene, that shows, um, it has a bunch of information, but it shows on there that our normal operating level is fourteen seventy-five. Um, so that is where the water should be kept, you know, at normal summertime, and that our drawdown would be two feet starting November first. That is not something that we have done, um, for a few years now, um, which, you know, I can't speak to what is essentially one hundred percent caused flash, the flashboards to activate. Um, but flashboards activating is because, um, during those large storm events, uh, we can only pull about a block on each side, um, at a time when the force of the water is so strong. Thus, we cannot keep up with the inflow of water coming in during these large rainstorms, so for the recommendation on the consultant agency and something we have not followed, bringing, doing that drawdown of two feet in the winter to be able to accept water and accept that flow rate as we have had, yes, and as we have heavy rainstorms. Uh, we have had an activation the past three years, which has cost us nearly fourteen grand um, overall to fix the dam over three years.
And those are due to the flashboard activating.
There's also the aspect of providing notice to folks
Yes.
downstream, which we have not done as well.
Obligated to not only inform camps and portent, but the dam bureau as well every time we have an activation event, which we have not done in the past.
Is there some sort of penalty with the dam bureau when, if?
I have not discussed that, um, and I can find out.
Okay.
So.
It's, it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just, it, it would seem as though they must have something in place to encourage.
Well, this seems to be the, after we armored the dam, uh, this seems to be the operations and maintenance plan
Yeah.
that, uh, we should have been following
Yes.
after the armoring of the dam. And there, and there were at least a couple instances. I mean, it mentions other thing, just to let people know, like mowing and
Yes.
and, and so forth, um, but in these two areas, drawing down the dam and one, uh, the water level, two feet.
Two feet.
Uh, it didn't, I don't recall seeing it at a, a end date, was there an end date to that?
There isn't an end date, it just says we would start the drawdown November first.
Right, I presume that you would do it after the, if the whole purpose is to prevent damage, you would do it after uh, snow melt and, uh, spring rains, then at some point you, you keep it up at the level. And the other thing we haven't been doing is noticing, um, really telling people downstream uh, our boards activated, and therefore there's excess water coming your way.
Hmm.
Okay, yeah, let me just, I'll get to, I just want to see if the board had any other.
Well, I had one other comment, it, they after it is sideways, but it, it talks about, it says, the OMR says the aerator will be monitored during the winter.
Yep.
I am unsure why you have one.
Yep.
Because we're supposed to be down two feet. That's, that's the.
Um, as far as the conversations I had with them, they were under the impression it was for, um, the mountain and snowmaking activities.
Hmm.
Okay, so, uh, um, let me, let me, uh, ask, uh, Tim, who's here, the President and General Manager of the ski resort, which has an easement on the pond as town property, but they have an easement for, uh, uh, water, water rights, water use, uh, to the pond, so, Tim, would you like to enter this conversation?
History on this.
Sure.
The longest in operating the pond. Of course, Dave, you've been here longer than I have, but, uh, operating the pond for snowmaking purposes, we traditionally have raised the pond during the snowmaking period, kept the pond.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, we just, uh, sorry to do this to you, but we had complaints that people can't hear, see, if you can take, uh, if you need to sit to look at your laptop, you can take the
That's okay.
the microphone out and
Um.
sit with it and chair.
No, so the, the pond traditionally, we would raise the pond up during snowmaking season, so we make sure we have the, the, the bulk of water that we need for snowmaking, as that is a major source of our snowmaking water, and that top two feet obviously is a large circumference of area, because a pond, you know, goes down and gets much less, uh, at the bottom. So what has been done in the past is when we see a storm on the, on the horizon, we have a phone call, we're, we either pump it down, or we pull the, pull the boards out, and that traditionally was what happened in the past. We haven't been doing that a number of years. Um, we obviously need the water for snowmaking, and we can keep the water up, um, it's our choosing if we want to keep the water up. It's not a regulation, um, to my understanding from the dam bureau, so I, I encourage us to make sure that we keep that water up, so we have enough to make snow with, um, as we currently uh, are about to go into that season when we're gonna really need that water. Uh, we're not there yet, we're only pumping about twenty-eight hundred gallons was what our max was, and we're getting that out of the river right now, but as we go into the bulk of the season, um, this will greatly affect how much water we can pull out of that dam.
So you're saying?
Um, and I wanted to see what the maintenance, the maintenance plan, I don't have that.
We need to a copy of, you mean, this, this operation and maintenance report?
But historically, we've been able to manage that by pulling, pulling the boards if we see a storm coming in. Um, Jim used to call me when I was running the ops, and we'd pull, we'd pull the dam boards, or we could turn on corkies, that also helps suck the pond down right before a storm.
So you're saying that before Megan joined, Jim Mayhew,
Mm-hmm.
under his direction, you were actually manipulating the boards on the day?
Oh, yeah.
No, well, the town was.
Not us, the town was, Jim would pull, Jim would, Jim would pull boards, and I would turn on corkies. We'd try to suck the water out of the pond before a big storm came in. Um, just try to get the water down as low as we could before a storm would come in. Um, he'd put dam boards in when he knew we were making, making snow and getting towards that part of the season when we needed as most water as we could, we could do.
Hmm.
Um, there's, there was a lot of manipulation of the pond.
So it sounds like there had been pretty good communications previously.
Yeah, and you have, and you talked to Marissa, yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything, is there any written agreement that lays all this out?
No, I never saw written agreement, not that I know of.
Yeah, I've not, I've not seen one.
But it, I know that when, uh, Tom had the pond, they were doing it themselves.
Right.
Um, back then, so it was just kind of a takeover of what they were doing, the standard operating that they were doing before.
Dan, did you?
When did things change? Uh, and how you're, and how things are being operated with respect to the pond?
When Jim left.
And the dam.
Yeah, when Jim left. We just didn't have quite the communications down, the, the, uh, uh, we just, I don't think we ever went over exactly how to operate the dam. Uh, we traditionally had operated the dam.
The town being the dam owners and responsibility of the town to operate the dam, we also have a responsibility to mitigate and prevent any activation from happening, which has not happened. Unfortunately, since Jim's left, you know, there has been more activations, but since it is submitted to the dam bureau that we draw down two feet, um, I'm going to follow what has been submitted to the dam bureau and pulling block, well, I've already pulled blocks, but pulling blocks to draw down two feet to mitigate and prevent any activations from happening.
So it's submitted to the dam bureau, so you submitted that?
I did not submit this.
It's a twen-, it's a twenty-twenty, af- after our, I'm sorry?
It's a twenty-ten document.
It's a twenty-ten? I thought it was, uh, the latest one might have been twenty.
They do have a new, yeah, I mean, it's a updated.
Yeah, I'm looking at the twelve oh eight twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Version, which was, I think, after the
Yeah.
after the dam was
Armored.
was armed.
Yeah.
But this was not something that I knew. I mean, they do have an updated form that they asked me to re-admit, but it's just, it's gonna state the exact same information that that one states, with the exception of the, uh, filling out agency, it's not gonna be the consultant agency, it'll be the town, so.
Any other, other comments from the board this time? Chief, I did want to ask you a question. When we discussed with you the water level in the, in, in the pond, uh, you, uh, expressed a concern about the ice and water level, could you, could you go over that again? The gap between.
We, we just need to have free board, uh, over it, uh, but again, in the wintertime, it's not as critical because we don't use the dry hydrant.
I think it reaches me, like, when, when it freezes, and then the water is drawn down underneath that.
Yeah, so there, there does create an air gap. Um, you know, there is an air gap, you know, once the water is high, it allows the freeze, and then the water will fluctuate in there based on the usage. Um, and, uh, you know, sometimes it, it creates a, a gap there that one of the main reasons why we put post the stay off the ice, uh, signs, uh, because you know, there is a danger, it is moving water, uh, there is pump operation, we have aerators in use, uh, that sort of thing, so it creates a hazard for people being on the ice that we constantly wrestle with, you know, year after year, but with the transient population, kids and stuff, uh, kind of takes a little bit of everybody, I think, you know, between town square staff, parents, uh,
Yeah, it's almost.
people around, and so it, it's always a struggle, uh, uh, to keep them off, but that's the main reason why we keep, keep everybody off, try to keep it, keep them off the ice.
Hmm.
It does seem to me that the situation does give some weight to, I think, the select board's desire to, uh, include in, uh, a new version of the water use agreement, some sort of maintenance and use provision, so that we can chart all this out. I understand, at least as I under, let me rephrase, as I understand it, so parentheses, I could be wrong. The, uh, this is not a requirement, uh, from the state, but this is, uh, what was recommended and that we said we would follow, recommended by a consultant, and what we represented to the state, that we would follow this maintenance and operation uh, procedures. So, um, I think we should follow them if that's what we represented, but I am not averse to changing it. Uh, if we can come to some sort of written agreements to what that changed. Uh, if we can come to some sort of written agreements to what that change could be. Um, I know, I, as I understand also, the purpose of of doing this was to uh, mitigate the activation. Or to prevent, actually, right, to prevent the activation of the boards, but also the damage caused by.
Damage causing to the dock.
And it's dock and any other shoreline uh, entity or existence. And I think you gave us the cost over three years. Now, this um, does not include labor, but this total cost, these were for um. Totally for the dam or for repairs or maintenance? Could you explain a little bit?
The costs there are both uh, is for after they were activated, is those costs.
Okay, this isn't day to day expenditure. This is only as results.
Expense that is.
Right.
Just the activation events.
So this is the four, roughly the fourteen thousand dollars you were referring to in cost. Uh, we had to uh. Incur because of the flashboard. Uh, ac- activating because of the level of the water.
Correct.
Okay, over three years.
So it's not only following what the O M R and what's been represented to the dam bureau, but also a cost saving. That you're trying to cover.
Yeah, Tim.
I think it's prudent to ask what the cost savings was prior to those three years. How many times is the dam dam boards been activated and how much did we spend on those? So I know it activated multiple times in the summertime and in the, and in the fall, especially during the Irene periods and. Those hurricane times. So I think we're seeing just a snapshot of information and probably should evaluate the long term.
Okay.
And and once again, we didn't have. Prior to um, the way that the dam's being operated, I don't remember having um. Any more or less uh, dam uh, activations. Uh, especially not in the wintertime, because I know Jim was, Jim was dumping water out. And actively managing that, that, those boards.
Okay. Again, I still think that to my mind, I'd be interested in hearing what other board members think and and Tim. What you think. I see James here as well. Seems to me this is a good reason to come up with something in writing as part of our discussions. On water usage so that we don't end up where we are today. Nothing in writing, but things were done in the past, best practice, perhaps. Uh, you, we own the dam, we own the pond, but you have the right to the, to the water. So. To me, that's the obvious solution to this. And again, again, I I've personally, I'm not averse to not dropping it to. Two feet if we can come up with a communications plan as part of that. Uh, agreement uh, to avoid any issues with with damage.
As long as that's what's submitted to the dam bureau, so that.
Yeah, we, and then we would update, we would update this, this plan to, to, to reflect those changes.
Yeah.
I don't know, Tim or James, did you, I'm sorry.
I would agree to that approach as well. I think. It's seemingly it worked for some period of years. The communication pathways and the, you know, the pumping down because we know we have a big storm coming and so forth. So we've had some obvious troubles, I guess, over the last few years. We need to s-. Stop, rethink things and address that as best we can. Certainly, a component of that appears to be a. Communication or improved communications.
Yeah, that could all be outlined.
I don't, you know, like Rich said, I. I'm not adverse to having the water level raised. Provided we have a means of controlling the situation. Um. And and I think that, you know, takes an effort on both parties to work together to.
Yeah, sure.
To do that.
I mean, there are other options as well that we can.
So.
Discuss uh, uh, you know, the town for the, the resort could buy the pond from the land. So then we'd be out of your hair and then you just maintain it however you wanna maintain it. So I mean, there are other options, but it seems to me the, the, the most likely option would just be some sort of written agreement. That's attached to our, to our water use uh, easement.
So the current issue today is that we're gonna be drawing down on that pond here in the coming week or two.
Okay.
So uh, it could slow down our snowmaking capacity. Uh, and that's what I, I really wanna try to get that pond level up as high as we can in the next week or two so that we can. Draw down on that pond, not have, oh, for one, aesthetically, it doesn't look pleasing when it's so muddy pit. Um, it definitely looks better when it's full. Uh, and for our guest purposes, third two is the snowmaking. Obviously, we wanna use as much water as we can, we can get the water in there. Um, and we will be using that in coming probably two to three weeks. Um, so I would like to work on this quickly so that we can make sure we have the water we need to make snow.
Yeah, I guess I'm also a little bit surprised because with the previous board, we'd had a communications with you, Tim and James as far as. Um, the possibility of working together for dredging. And at that point, you said that you didn't need the pond water. So I'm a little bit surprised that this is an issue. Um, you know. And it's unfortunate we didn't talk about it then so that we wouldn't be in this position.
I don't recall ever saying we don't need the pond water. I'm sorry.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was twelve, I I I vigorously recall myself saying we very much need the pond water because it's. A large, uh, we had a conversation about how many gallons per minute we take out of there. We take between twelve and eighteen hundred gallon a minute out of there that goes into our wet well. We have two sixteen hundred gallon a minute.
Yeah, no, this is when we were talking about the dredging.
Right, as opposed to when we were talking about.
Getting more water out of there. Yeah, the.
Right, optic, right.
Yeah, the problem with going any deeper is our pot, our, our bottom of our pump always goes down so deep.
Sure.
So we can't hold, if we go deeper in the pond, it doesn't really do much for how much water we can, we can retain or pull out. If we went wider, we could, but we, without going deeper, we can't really do that much. It's not, it's not that much more water that's helpful. The big top two feet that we're talking about right now, it's kind of that critical. Amount of water that we need because that's where a big bulk of that water gets sorted and pushed down on the head of the, head of the pump and that gives us more water comes out. Without doing, dropping their pump down.
Right, but it wouldn't be that hard to just decrease the length of pipe for the.
We don't necessarily. And that was also part of that conversation was needing more water. We just need the water that we've had.
Hmm.
And now we're talking about taking water away. We're not talking about adding water.
So I think the, the two questions then are, is um, the ski resort amenable to. Uh, including our discussions, a water and use agreement to address this. And we know, we have had a couple meetings, we'll probably need two or three more. Uh, it'll take a little time. Uh, probably over, over the season before we, you know, dot all the i's and cross all the t's. But in the interim, the second part of this is, are we willing to raise the water in contravention to what we said uh. Uh, we would do in terms of operation and maintenance until we get this agreement in writing.
Well, we would need to know that there's a communication stream because that's been difficult as well.
I think that would be uh, inherent in.
Yeah.
Agreeing to raising the, raising the water.
Yeah.
Right. Once a week, I do, we can give you an update every week.
Well, whenever you, how did you work it before? You said it was almost seamless, it sounds like when Jim Mayhew was here. So how are those communications previous and why can't that?
By Jim. Jim will call, call me or call Barry. And he would say, hey, I need to drop the pond. Uh, it looks like we could be seeing a storm again. And when you jump pond down, so we're gonna be dropping the pond down. Um.
But we also need.
Can he turn corkies on, help us put, pull some water out?
Sure.
Um, it wasn't very often that it was, it was us asking them.
Right. So it wasn't the inverse where you were alerting that because a big part of the expenses are the replacing the aerators. Um, so you weren't in the habit of calling to say we're running, so unplug the aerator.
No, we, we never had a problem with the aerator.
Well, we.
Prior to this.
Oh.
We never had a problem with the aerator.
Dan, did you wanna say anything? I have more comments, but.
No, I don't have another comment.
So it seems to me that's, that is kind of flipped on its head. I mean, I don't know how long, I guess it'll depend on what's coming our way. I don't know um, how long would fill it, but what kind of advanced, in a communications plan, what kind of advanced notice could you give? Department of Public Works that you would like the pond uh, to be at the fourteen seventy five level so you can. So you can draw the water. And then at other times, I don't know if this is feasible, I'm asking. Uh, we would keep it at the two feet below the normal as we said we would on the operations and maintenance report.
Right.
Is that, is that possible? Is that approach possible?
And not impossible whatsoever to just state that we're, you know, we're getting ready to make snow or we're done making snow. Um, we can draw ponds down. Uh, we normally make snow until about President's Day weekend. We normally slow down right around the first of February. Um, traditionally, we did, we have plenty of water in the river, um, for running there about three quarters of capacity. That last quarter of capacity when, you know, it really hits hard and that's normally right before we, between Thanksgiving and and uh. Uh, the first February, we're really going hard.
I guess what I'm asking is, uh, is this something, are you looking for uh, the level to be at a certain level constantly? Or uh, or like, um, what I'm trying to get across is, we keep it normally after one November below the two feet. Um, requirement that, that we said we would follow. And then you contact D P W to say, we're gonna be making snow in a, in a week so that we can put the blocks back in. The pond can fill up, you can make snow, and then we can take the blocks out. Is it, does it work that way? And get it back down to the two level so we, so we mitigate the risk of any damage.
In the past, it didn't work that way. In the past, it was, we just kept the blocks in, we kept the, the pond level high. Um, we sucked quite a bit of water out of there, so it didn't always get all the way back up. Um, and it would, you know, it'd fill and it would fill when we were down. And then it would, it would drain it when we were using it. And it was just an ever, ever flow. And then if we saw a big, you know, we had a big storm. I wanna say twenty oh, uh, two thousand nineteen, eighteen or nineteen. We had a massive storm about MLK that washed everything out. And that was one of those big ones that we had to pull the water down and try to get it down as low as possible because of the, the rain that was coming in that weekend, I believe it was. Okay. Um, and so we have had those happen.
Yeah, how much notice do you need to pump the water down? Let's say we're running it at the high level. And all of a sudden, forecast says we're gonna get hammered.
It was like maybe four, it was like a day or two.
So it takes a day to drop it two feet or two days or.
Especially if we're in a rush and we're trying to drop down, pull the boards out, put the pump on, that thing comes down pretty quick.
Historically, it's been twenty four hours. Yeah, usually.
Okay.
You can see what the forecast is and usually, uh, it goes in there. Historically, the issue hasn't been during the winter than those.
Spring.
Very.
Right.
Random.
Storms.
Right, like Irene.
Come in. The majority of our flashboard is spring.
Right.
Uh, and coming into late summer, early fall.
Yep.
Yeah, historically, we had a very active uh, hurricane season. And we've been out of that active hurricane season for two years. Neutral, you know.
Yeah.
I think in the last couple years too, and things may be changing, right? I think we all know that. We've had some. Heavy rains in December, I think, a couple years ago that really did some damage to town roads and whatnot.
Yeah.
At that time.
But could the communications work as Rich has suggested, suggested, or is that not something that?
Those, we keep the pond at the below the two feet level. Uh, unless you tell us you're gonna make, you'll be making snow and you need it higher, and then we could. We can put the blocks back in, you make it higher, you you pump your water.
Snowmaking standpoint, absolutely. That's fine from a snowmaking standpoint. From a statics of the town, I think it doesn't give the town a very good look to be two feet down. It looks muddy.
Hmm.
Until we get the snow.
Hmm.
Once we have the snow, then it doesn't really matter unless it goes up and then.
Right, yeah, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking too. Uh, well, I mean, what do you guys think? We need to make a decision here, right?
I mean, I feel like until we update the dam bureau with our new O M R, we should follow what's there, but we should also accommodate. The water usage where we can. So I think, I like your plan, you know, to follow the O M R and then. Fill the pond when you guys need the water.
Right, and then, and then um. Legalize is not the right word, but memorialize all this and some, some sort of a uh.
Yeah.
A weight uh, maintenance and use agreement as part of our discussions slash negotiations over the water usage rights.
Yes.
I'm sorry, are you looking at a twenty twenty or twenty ten?
Uh, it's twenty, the one I have in front of me is a twenty twenty, I believe.
Yeah.
I think it's the one that was um, right after the. That was presented.
Armory.
Uh, after, right after the armory. It's, it was December twenty. Operation Maintenance and Response Form, O M R, Water Division Dam Bureau, uh, twelve oh eight twenty twenty. That would be after the.
So it sounds like we need to address that, all on O M R and.
Right, we can make the changes. I mean, we could, uh, that's what I was getting at in a water and use agreement. We just make it permanent to a large extent. Uh, as, as long as the dam bureau is, is fine with it. But in the meantime, we could, we could do this.
Hmm.
Keep it at the level we said we would in our operations and maintenance, except when you tell us you need the water to make snow. Put the blocks back, make it snow, take the blocks out.
Sure.
It's not, I know it's not the efficient best way to do, but we can work on a better system under some sort of water. Water use agreement, um, maintenance and use agreement. Does that, that work for you guys? Just trying to.
Well, it's with the water for snowmaking, I'm. Like it'll look pretty too, but.
James is very quiet here. James, did you wanna comment at all on this?
No, Tim knows far more about the dam and snowmaking than I do, so.
I mean, you could take it, well, not, you could take it all back, but it wasn't you, but uh, the waterboat uh. Company, actually, as you, as you well know, uh, we bought quote unquote the dam and the pond from the waterboat company and. Uh, that's something that is open for discussion as well with this board.
Okay, fair to you.
Okay, so. Are we good going forward with that?
I am.
All right, so what we need to do is make sure there's a, a communications channel that's up and running and that works. Uh, between uh, whatever, whatever subordinates you guys wanna, Marissa and. Uh, think about it a little bit as to how you think it would work best for D P W, this sort of arrangement. And then talk to Marissa and make it so.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Always like being collaborative. It's always an easier option. Okay. Well, you're still up now, James. Maybe you wanna say something about the next topic. This has to do with the uh, air rights uh. Warrant you would like to have put in front of the town in March of twenty twenty six?
Sure thing, thank you. Um, as, as we've discussed a few times in the past, um, the resort's master plan. Uh, uh, includes a uh, aerial lift, a gondola, uh, most likely that runs from the center of town uh, up to. Up to the mountain. That's been a long, long-term goal of uh, in both the resorts uh, master plan. And as well as uh, something that is in the town's master plan. Um, uh, I think as you also know, we are in the process of permitting that project with the Forest Service. We are working with them um, on an E I S right now. Uh, that would, that uh, that we have uh, submitted to them under a project proposal letter. To, to permit that gondola, um, their permitting obviously applies only to uh, uh, forest service land, not to private land. So we have to make arrangements to be sure that we can construct and operate the lift over um, non-forest service lands. And in this case, uh, if as proposed, the gondola terminal is in the area of the uh, parking lot. Uh, uh, near the ice arena, it would have to cross over two town-owned roads, which are uh, uh. Village Road and Snows Brook Road, as, as well as a couple of private properties, one of which is owned by Tyrell, which is us. Uh, in which we have included, we have developed an easement which is recorded for an aerial lift to cross that property. There's a condo association with whom we've had discussions about an easement to uh, cross their property. And we've also had conversations with the state to cross um, uh, Tripoli Road, which is a state road. Uh, and so with regards to the town roads though, uh, as, as I think you are all aware, there, there's a specific state statute. Regarding uh, air rights, the right to, the aerial rights across town roads. And that state, that statute specifies a process by which a town can enter into an aerial rights agreement. Um, and the first step in that process is to uh, to go, to put a warrant article before the voters of the town. Um, that is written in a certain way and, and what it does is it authorizes the select board. Uh, the governing body, in this case, the select board, to uh, give them the authority to enter in, to negotiate. And, and execute uh, an agreement, an easement, an air rights agreement, however it's. Um, uh, however it's actually designated, uh, with a, with a, with a third party to allow them to cross over town roads. So uh, this warrant article, we looked at, we had, we, we asked our attorney to look at the, the statute, the RSA. To make sure that if, if a warrant article went forward to the town, it was written in the, in the right way. To make sure that if if a warrant article went forward to the town, it was written in the in the right way. To uh make sure it's addressing what the statute requires it to be addressed, and we we pass that along to you, asking you to consider. Putting that on the warrant uh this spring. Uh, that would be the March twenty twenty-six warrant. Right now, we are looking at um uh mid to late twenty twenty-seven as a target. Date for the Forest Service to complete the EIS and issue their record of decision. Um, we've worked with them on uh uh on the schedule. We've actually been able to sort of trim a little bit of time on the schedule, which is. Why sort of this popped up on our radar screen is something we'd like to. Start addressing because obviously the air rights to cross over those roads would be instrumental in being actually able to build and operate um the the gondolas. So. What what we would like to do is is ask the select board to, you know, review that warrant article if they, you know, and. Certainly change it or update it in whatever way you or town council um uh um would like to see to make sure you're comfortable with the language, but. Uh, this is the first step in um that process of eventually providing air rights to cross over town roads. This isn't. This isn't an agreement to do so. All it is 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 that the the voters of the town giving the select board the authority to enter into an agreement. So it's really a multi-step process. And this is, this would be the first step.
Okay, thank you, James. Uh, we have discussed this with you, not this particular warrant article, but I think it was a couple of years ago. Two or three years ago, perhaps. I'm losing track now of time, but the select board, the different select board at that time. Uh, did agree to uh write a letter to the Forest Service saying that, in light of the fact, as you mentioned, James. That a gondola is contemplated uh in the master plan as well as having a permitted right in our zoning. Uh, that the select board uh would uh be supportive of going forward with uh. With a gondola project contingent on, you know, the town. Uh, making a a decision on on the matter. So we did talk to council about this, and I think the decision, the board. Uh, at least we should make the decision now. We really can't make any decisions in a in a non-meeting is to uh move forward with uh. Uh, language. Uh, our our um town council had some some differences of what, nothing major. Uh, I think, but we could, we could uh present uh present that uh as a warrant article for. The town to consider, as you say, is for negotiating. It's not a not a vote about up or down, so to speak. Or in a pun on the gondola, but rather just giving the select board the power to negotiate air rights. Either support.
No, I think you adequately covered the.
Okay, so I think we're we're uh positively inclined to to go forward with this. Um. We can get you a copy of uh what our council, town council recommend the language uh that she would like to see. Uh, I didn't see any differences, frankly, uh but, you know, two lawyers get together and.
Yeah.
This is what you get, two different versions of the same thing, which essentially perhaps says the same thing. So uh we can get you a copy of that and we will incorporate it into our discussions of uh. Of the warrant and uh various warrant articles that we will be moving forward uh. Yeah, I guess over the next month, month or two. Yeah, Tim?
I just one other thing on this. Uh, this is really on the resort side. It's not on the Tyrell side. So just when we're referring to this, it's it's for the Watergo Valley Gondola.
Right.
Um, and that's because it reflects back to the Forest Service and our EIS program.
Right.
So I just want to make sure we phrase it correctly.
Yeah, and I I I understand that there's some legal niceties here about the. Who who the parties actually are legally speaking. So, okay, I I think we will, we will go ahead and uh uh consider uh putting, well, not consider, we will we'll put this on 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 the warrant. Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, no, that's okay. We're going to do that as the town put this through as a warrant. Article as opposed to having Tim.
They could always petition it. I mean, you, I think James well well knows and Tim does as well, that they could just.
Yeah.
Uh, petition it, but I think there it it does make more sense for a variety of reasons for. Uh, to select board to include it in the the list of warrant articles that will be going forward and um. Let the discussion uh happen at at town meeting.
Yeah. Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is anything else you wanted on that, James? Does that work for you guys?
No, that that's great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And I just to to emphasize your point, we do. We feel like it it it's best to, you know, collaborate with you on this. As you said, we could. Go out and collect some signatures and put it on as a petition, but I think, you know, working through the select board so that people are aware this is coming and it's not kind of a last-minute thing dropped in, I think, is. Is to everyone's benefit to understand what what exactly this is and what 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 it's uh being put forward for. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Great, all right, thank you. All right, shall we soldier on here?
Yes.
Um, the Town Manager Search Committee update. Steve is away at a conference uh for. A couple of days. I did talk to him about this. Uh, the update simply is that three or four. Uh, individuals has have emerged that. As being worthy of an interview. Uh, and uh Steve has been working with the committee and its chair, Margaret Turner, to arrange those interviews. So that's where things stand at this point in time. Okay. Now, the one we always like talking about, Dylan, the wastewater treatment facility update and all the various aspects.
Right, um. Value engineering, um services, RFP requests went out.
Excuse me, Dylan, can you come up and actually speak towards microphone because it it gets hard to. Hear you.
He sees camera shot.
Tapes and stuff.
Um, so value engineering, um request for services went out yesterday afternoon. Thanks to Kristen, plus on the town website. It's gonna be going on HMA as well.
Can I just interject? Because I had a couple of panicked people call me and they who thought that we had fired our current engineers. This is not to replace our current engineers. This is a step with our current for value engineering.
Yes, and and just on that matter, I did uh Andy Knight, who you know, wrote the article, the long article for the Wigwag. For the November issue. Uh, I've been in contact with him and he's got the update about the value engineering, how it's. A second opinion to put it in non-professional terms.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, so, yeah. Um, I in preparation for that, I had reached out to a number of engineering firms. There's three or four that are interested in doing it.
Good.
Um, a lot of them look at this, though, as they don't want to necessarily do it and not have any work in the future, so they're trying to like. Potentially court us as well.
Fair enough.
Heads up. Well, as you can expect, it's not, it's not like it's a huge uh job by any means.
I'm off for capitals.
Yeah, um, that is a December nine um seminal date, so I I wanted to fuse uh December second. However, that was not gonna be enough time with the holiday uh between now and then.
Right.
Uh, so December nine, seminal, and then ideally, what I'd like to do, depending upon if the board is amenable to it. Uh, is have a meeting with the board to grade these and then select one at the following board meeting. Um, so that way we can have them start in January and get this knocked out.
Sure. Yeah, we have two regular meetings where we can lay on a special meeting. I think so. This would be a second board meeting.
In the in December.
In December.
Correct, yeah, December seventeen.
Seventeenth, I think it is. So at that one, you would like to.
Select.
Select it. So we need to meet before that to to go over your. Your analysis and uh your recommendations.
Right, and and it'd be I similar to um when we select Black and Beach, a requalification base, um as well as. Um, they'll have a proposal with a cost um submitted with it.
Okay.
So it won't just be, wouldn't just solely be qualifications.
So you're kind of looking at the week of, you said in December ninth, then you'll want a few days, I imagine, to.
Yeah.
Review these.
Correct.
So probably, what is the ninth? I think.
It's a Tuesday, I believe.
So maybe with the following week for.
That'd be fine. I mean, even even later that week, it's not gonna take me long.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so shortly after the ninth, uh we can get together in a special meeting and you can brief us on.
Sure.
Your analysis and recommendations, and then we could do the actual. Rest of the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
The voting and whatnot, yeah.
Aside from that, um, we have a meeting, Stephen and I have a meeting with PFM on Friday eleven twenty-one, so this Friday. Um, to have a draft presentation regarding um the financial aspect of of the project.
Okay.
Um. And there'll be probably be a follow-up meeting to that, just to see if, you know, if there's any bugs that need to be worked out or corrected or anything like of that magnitude. Um, and big thanks to to Tim for coordinating with me on the subsurface work of the resort that was completed as of eleven ten. Um, so I'm just waiting to hear back on the findings from Black and Beach. Um. Otherwise, there's a couple of items in non-public regarding the legal aspect of the project.
Okay.
Touch on with you.
We'll get that, that's great. Anyone have any questions on communications, engineering? Legal, that's not for non-public and funding at this point?
Yep.
I think we're still working on a public hearing, um.
Twelve eighteen.
I was gonna say twelve eighteen was what came to mind. I knew it was that third week.
Yeah, that's what, that's our.
That's still our, that's still our date.
Everyone that that we need to have coordinated uh for that, that date works for them.
Right.
Um, so that's what we're going with for now.
We got a number of, we got a number of actors involved, so this is a little bit like herd and cat.
Yeah.
And we need them all there.
Absolutely.
Legal, financial, and engineering, yeah.
Yep. So.
Any, any questions on on the update at this point? As I said, I did talk to Andy Knight and gave him uh the latest update at that at that time, so I think this will this will be also um. Uh, generated out to the people.
Perfect.
Via the Wigwag here shortly. Okay.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to Department Head Updates. Chief, would you like to go first?
Um, nothing. Uh, just wanna take the other departments and put the word out for the just temporary closure up here at the intersection this morning. Uh, for the electrical up, the contractors working for the go-up. Transfer the uh new transformer to the substation over there. Uh, they just needed that amount of space in order to do that. Uh, went pretty smooth, so uh. Uh, no issues with that. Hopefully, everybody got the message, uh, which is good. Uh, we did have an offer for the ambulance on there, um, and. Unless there's any questions and if you agree with that, that price, we'll hopefully have a purchase and sales. Um, whenever ambulance gets here, we'll prepare that.
I mean, it's generally in line of what we discussed, isn't it? Yeah, so.
Yeah, we went back and forth and that's where we met in the middle, and uh I think it's a pretty fair price. Um, you know, for both parties, so um. Uh, I'll I'll have something prepared as it as it gets closer. Again, the current ambulance has held up because of a. Check engine length, so I've been being told, working out with manufacturer.
Yeah.
Uh, through the dealer, so I I don't have an update as to uh. A delivery. It was supposed to be here two weeks ago. So. Uh, and then other than that, uh, any other questions you may have?
Yeah.
That being answered.
Yeah, and anything else other than uh any questions from the report? Everything seems to be going as we had discussed earlier, Dan?
I had a simple question with respect to the ambulance, and that is, do we need to. Vote to accept that offer of fifty thousand dollars? Um, at this juncture, so that he can communicate with them appropriately, that we have accepted that as an offer? I I'm asking that.
I believe I will have a purchase and sales for you to.
To actually, with the actual cost.
Yeah, for for the actual cost.
Okay.
If.
That's fine.
Verbally, at this point, if we're both in in agreement, I think we'll be able to. Do the P and S and then that way I'll bring that into you so you can.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds, yeah, I think that's how we've done it in the past, so that's fine.
I just want to make sure we don't inadvertently hold things up because of meeting schedules.
No, I I appreciate that, but I, again, we're kind of in limbo right now, so um I'll have that prepared for you as soon as.
Okay.
Get the other one in service.
Okay.
Tim has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I just want to say thank you to Chief Noise and the and the town for taking care of the co-op yesterday. They were in full freakout mode. Like that, I that, it, the transformer that they brought in. Was absolutely massive, ninety-foot trailer, eighty-thousand-pound transformer, and this is what we've been waiting for, fix our power.
Right.
That's been out here, and I think it's important for the board to know and also the public to know that this is a major piece of infrastructure for our town that was put in, and it was. A complete cluster yesterday, trying to figure out what to do with this ninety-foot trailer that couldn't even go into town because it can't make the corner. So thank you, Chief and your team.
Actually, I know, thank you for reminding me and bringing that up, Tim. We had actually scheduled the briefing by. Uh, NH.
Bill.
Bill, what's his last name? He was gonna come, I'm sorry.
Bill Johnston.
Thank you, Bill Johnston. Unfortunately, something came up and he had to cancel. But I, this was gonna be part of that discussion, absolutely, and he. Discuss the issue of why the outages were getting, and he was gonna give an update and why, what was going on there and why that was important. But he's still coming.
It's not quite tied in yet, but we're we're very close to tying that in.
Great.
It's a massive piece of infrastructure for our town, so.
Great.
Everybody.
Okay, anything else for?
No.
Debtor of public, public safety, I imagine everything's going well?
Yep.
Getting ready for all your um. Uh, leave schedules around the holidays?
Uh, yeah, a lot of them have already started. Usually, we see a lot in October and through uh November. So uh we have a lot of hunters on our department, so they've.
I see.
And they're taking time. You may or may not see me next week.
Okay. Have our uh. What's the proper terminology? Ursine friends, have they gone to sleep for uh the winter yet, do you think?
Uh, I'm pretty sure, yeah. I I was uh, I had to plan and put my own feet around this.
Yeah, that's why I asked. I want to know whether to put, I can put my feeters out now.
They should be pretty for as cold as it's been. Uh, seems early with the snow and stuff, they're. Probably wrapping up. There may be a few stragglers out there, but. But most bark.
All right. Great. Okay, uh, Brooke, since you're next, uh, chief, please have at it.
Well, in addition to the update that I provided, if you have any questions, that that's great, but I wanted to let the board know that the WVRA and the WVLA met today, and while there were no decisions made, I feel like there. Um, is progress generally, and um we will be meeting again next week. Um, so I wanted to let you know that.
Okay, can we, can you hang around to a non-public after after this meeting? Do you have the time today? Okay, well, good.
And then also wanted to um address an email that. That I saw from Donna to the WVRA regarding something separate. She had mentioned that the town, you know, select.
You're talking about Donna Devlin, the theater under the stars for everybody, everyone listening, right, yeah.
Um, she had um. Sort of referred to some, you know, coming back again for twenty-first year and that the, you know, that she referred to the select board's. Um, support, and I just wanted to just bring that up, make sure that you are all aware that that sounds like she is coming back.
She's not.
She did state very explicitly in the letter that there is select board support, and I'm not sure how that was conveyed.
Don't know how that was conveyed because I thought we made a plan.
What letter is this? I haven't seen it.
That she had submitted for funding to the WVRA a as part of our event funding.
Oh, okay. And in that.
In it, in it, in that request, there is representation that the select board is. I I've read exactly how she phrased it, but basically that.
Something else to bring to your attention, and also um perhaps we need to make some sort of uh decision about that.
Mm-hmm.
Or you.
Yeah.
As you said.
I think the last time we talked about it, we were waiting for a affirmative request. From Donna saying, I want to come back next year.
Right.
To the town, not to the WVRA.
True.
That, but wrapped you into it, and I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Because I think that will be a discussion.
Yeah.
Will not be a pro-former approval, yeah.
Other than that.
The fireworks?
The fireworks, oh, I can, I can, I can talk about that. So the uh WVRA did vote to. Um, approve the funding that the town um. Submitted for three thousand dollars towards the fireworks, so for the twenty twenty-six fireworks.
So that was like twenty K was the total.
Yeah, so it was, yep, so the amount was three thousand, which helps offset just the additional cost to the town for this particular year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, then we will, we will discuss that further.
Looking forward to fill that gap.
An additional five or four would break, was it thirteen last year?
I was, I believe it was thirteen last year. But yeah, I think, yeah, I think we're.
Thirteen and then it went up to twenty-one, right?
Twenty.
Because it's the two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Right, and I think we made a plan at a previous meeting that that was a heavy lift.
Right.
For the town and that we would be looking for folks to help, but we would be willing to pay the thirteen. Or did we even get that far?
We didn't even get that far, but.
We wanted to see if there would be other.
Find funding.
Right, private, uh. Right, private uh nonprofit contributors to this, okay? Yeah, Tim.
We've been noticed also that the tariffs are taking effect on the prices of the fireworks, so they're going up, not just because of the two fifty, but it's like double. It's the two hundred fiftieth, and the prices are going up because of tariffs, so.
Okay, makes sense.
We're seeing that in our fireworks displays for the winter and.
Okay.
Going forward. Some reason the pricing doesn't seem to come down.
Funny thing about that.
Never, never does.
That was the big worry was. Go for the two fifty, and then.
It's gonna stay, which is, I wouldn't be surprised. All right, well, we will uh.
Please call Donald and see what you can do.
We will incorporate this into our budget discussions and see where we're at. Uh in terms of town funding for the fireworks. It was good to hear that Resort Association is gonna, willing to kick in three. Three thousand for that. Um you had mentioned, uh I think it may have been just uh uh an email to me, but the. Concern over the signage, or at least not having the money at this time, I know you and Megan had talked about it, this is the signage for the Britain property. I think.
Yeah.
The rec land, yeah, so could, yeah, could you just? Uh.
You want me to?
Yeah, just, just say out what you sent me in an email, just so it's on the public record.
Yeah. Uh. After looking at the budget and, and where the, the, you know, the budget line on Megan's um. Budget for DPW is, is totally exhausted for that, for that line, so what we're thinking about is. Perhaps putting it into a spring budget line. I do believe that a lot of. What's gonna happen at that land will kind of fall under the Parks Rec and in the future, um and I think that a sign. Like a proper sign with many different things on it, not just like singular signs here or there about.
Right, no, I've always thought of it as a.
So we could.
That way, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it might be better put into the rec budget next year, or actually more specifically the parks. Um and it can include a blown up trail map, you know, and, and various things.
A little kiosk.
Yeah, a little, kind of like.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you can have all the signage noted.
So we were gonna go out there, but Megan brought that up, and then I, we realized that this would be something maybe better for the next year's budget, and hopefully. Thinking late spring, you know, having it.
So put it in the parks budget line?
Yes. Not sure what that amount will be. I'll have to.
Right.
Uh come up with that when I redo our budget review, but um. Yeah, that's the, that's the current thinking.
I mean, I'm fine with that, I mean, I, yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Bill, do you think that you need as well out there um and still continue the. Collaborative sign at Hawks?
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's, now that we have the property, I just wanted to get the signage up as soon as possible. Just the town now owns, owns the property. Okay, no, I think that's fine. We'll, we'll incorporate that into our twenty twenty six budget. We never take anything out, we always add more stuff in our budget discussion. I did, you just uh. Just uh sparked a memory. I am noticing, and I'm wondering if we really perhaps shot ourselves in the foot here. We put up signs, but you know, across from Ray Lane, that turn, the old turnaround on Osceola Road. Uh parking for rec land use only, and no parking between November first and, was it April? Thirty eighth or April first? Yeah, those times, uh no one's paying attention to the signs. So the reason, so there are two aspects to this, and that's why I say maybe we shot ourselves in the foot, and perhaps putting any sign up at all was not a good idea, but. The reason we didn't want anyone parking there from November first through whatever it was in April was because. Snow plowing, and you use it, so uh do you want to maintain that? And keep those signs there? People are parking there every day.
Contractors.
Contractors, I say, I say almost exclusively. We can be a little lenient, as long as it doesn't look like there's any. Snow coming.
I prefer them to park off the road than park in the road.
Yep, that's, that's historically where they parked.
Yeah.
You know, and never said anything to them in the past. And they're working on that house back there. I'm not sure how long, well, they got a new lot they cleared. So I'm sure that.
There's gonna be some continued work there. The, the three houses right there. Had worked for the last two years.
Yeah, it seems, it seems almost permanent, yeah. So I mean, it, it does raise an important question, I, that, at that land, with that work going to continue for some time, I imagine. A whole idea of making sure parking was available for people to use a rec land disappears unless we enforce. You know? Who is parking there?
If, if you do not want contractors to park there, we can tell them to move.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's posted for no parking.
Well, and the, well, there's, there's the parking for rec use is one aspect, but so the other aspect is, there shouldn't be any parking there now at all. It shouldn't even be. An issue. I mean, do we wanna, and that, what I guess, what I was asking, do we wanna throttle back on that at all? Um. Perhaps allow the parking, but if we see snows coming, I don't know how you do that, uh tell people don't park there.
Regulation, they clearly state you can't, there is a parking ban in the highway regulations. Um.
That kind of settles it then. Yeah, I'm trying, I'm looking for a way not to be.
Park on the road.
Hmm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, you have contradicting.
Well, that's what I'm trying, that's what I was getting at.
And so typically, the contractors are. Uh more than willing to work with the plow crews and not be in certain sections when.
Yeah, most, most of them know.
Most of, most of them do know.
So.
Um. You know, it's the same, same contractors that we deal with on a regular basis, and they kind of get the, they get the gist, if it's snowing, they're gonna move their cars.
Yeah.
Uh. Usually work with them that way, uh specifically if it's because of, of uh the rec land, knowing that it's not typically used at this time of year. Uh I almost prefer them to not be in the road, because if you saw how busy it is over there.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. There's a lot of work going on.
Trucks.
Yeah, I know, park the up and down right lane.
Ray Lane and Osceola, and if they can move them off the road.
Hmm.
I, I prefer it that way anyway, just because there are so many other pedestrians that do use that roadway.
Yeah.
Um that if they are off.
Every day.
Over there, then. Uh. Uh from a safety standpoint, I would prefer, uh prefer that it's not overnight parking, they're not there.
No.
We know who they are. Uh it's the same, same vehicles on a regular basis, and as long as they're willing to work with DPW. During their times and not create a problem there.
Yeah, I've heard.
We, we have left them alone.
Right.
You know.
Right, and I, I, I for one, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, is, is fine with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It makes it difficult, though, to try to enforce it on anybody else. This past. I wanna say Saturday night, I was walking through there, walking the dog.
Mm-hmm.
And there were two cars parked there. Clearly, it was for overnight parking. So it was overnight parking, it was after November, it was after November first.
Really good tickets.
And I guess the question I'm asking is, you know, are we being fair?
Right.
To them, because we're allowing it for. Contractors.
Well, and I think, I, I mean, contractors, we've historically, historically have always allowed because it's been in the ordinance that they can park in the road, but.
Right.
During the times that they're working. Uh you know, anytime that they're not working after, especially after ten o'clock. Uh noise ordinance, then there shouldn't be anybody there.
Right. And it typically isn't. If anyone's parked there, it's someone visiting or.
That's right.
Using.
Uh then they have to find a parking lot or parking space on their own, on the medium, and they shouldn't, they shouldn't be there. So, but we're fine with enforcing that. Uh that way, because we can explain that if anyone wanted to fight a ticket in court, that would be the reasoning that we use some. Uh and have the ordinance to back it up, so.
Okay. You don't think uh no overnight parking would? Take some of the burden off you guys?
No, I think it's more.
Like we do with the other signs.
More of a training issue on our part, making sure, I, I think. Perhaps some of the officers get accustomed to seeing vehicles there and. Perhaps, you know, ignore it, but knowing that it's becoming an issue that's, I can help with that.
Uh okay.
And make sure that that's being kept an eye on, that it doesn't become a overnight parking spot, because that's not what it's designated for.
Yeah.
So um I think we can do some education on our part.
Great.
And help clean that up.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. What do you, what do you think, Dan?
No, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
All right, see how it, how it goes.
Yeah, and if it, if it's not, then, you know, by all means, we can revisit it, but uh.
I mean, if they stay there, they'll just have a snowbank the size of their car, like their car, so.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, you don't wanna be, if. The storm and people park there, and then what do you do? You gotta get them towed and all that kind of nonsense.
I do have one question with respect to contractors parking on the roads. And that is. Are they allowed to park on both sides of the road?
We encourage them not to.
Okay, well, up on Cascade Ridge, up on Cascade Ridge, working on a house as you go up the hill there. And on occasion, they've been parking on both sides of the road, which makes it pretty tight when you come around that corner.
Mm-hmm.
As you're coming down the hill.
Yep, and we try to encourage it if we can't get a fire truck through.
So this would be somebody calling and just alerting you guys?
Usually calling, we will, we will sometimes catch that on patrol too, so if, if they're up and we drive by and see it. Usually it's just a, look away into the license, just say, hey, can you guys move the, move your vehicles to the same stuff? You know, just like anyone that calls because they're having an event at their house, we encourage all same side parking, same thing.
Yep. Okay, and for everyone to know, what number do you want them to call during the workday, Monday through Friday? It's the town office with your extension?
Yep, town office.
It's not a nine one one call?
Uh no, not a nine one one, uh eight, eight oh nine number to Chief Pear.
Eight, eight oh nine?
Yep, uh to his extension or the four seven three zero, uh either Kristen or Alicia will. Pick up the phone and can direct it, them to the appropriate person that's here.
Great, and on weekends or holidays?
Uh weekends or holidays, it'd be the dispatch number, uh if you call the eight eight oh nine.
It'll roll over too.
Voicemail land, and it won't be seen until typically on Monday. Uh but if you call the four seven three two.
Right.
Anyone that needs to call, get in touch with an officer that's non-emergency.
Right.
Uh it's four seven three two, that's your direct to or dispatcher.
Two, three, six?
Two, three, six, four, seven, three, two.
Four, seven, three, two, so make sure everyone's got that.
Yep.
Six oh three, two, three, six, four, seven, three, two for non-emergency, uh.
Contact.
Contact.
Yep.
Contact an officer during off hours.
Yep.
Holidays.
Anytime a day.
Oh, anytime with that.
Anytime a day. Uh you can call four seven three two, goes direct to or dispatcher. If you would like, if it's an administrative call, we would encourage people just to call the office, the admin number. Uh but if you really need to speak to somebody and it's an issue, four, seven, three, two is the go-to number, uh. Uh no matter what day it is, what time, that goes right, direct to or dispatcher, there's always somebody will pick up the phone.
Okay. That's good. Yeah. Alrighty, uh so I guess, I guess we're done, Brooke?
Unless you have any questions for.
Nothing else for Rex? Alrighty, who's next in line? Uh all right, Megan, sure. You can do it. Have at it.
Well, just snow on our part, plowing, um we are using a heavier sand to salt ratio mixture this year. Um so if it is a little bit icy or a little bit longer, it is because we are using a more sand-heavy mix.
Okay.
Out on the roads, um which come springtime, you will see more sand out on the road. Um there will be sweeping scheduled to get all that taken care of. Uh but just in the meantime, might be a little slimmer a little bit longer, um. That's where I.
And this is in response to community concerns about the use of salt on the roadways.
Yep.
So, just to get, get, get that on, on the record.
Trying to reduce the salt usage.
Right, okay. Not a cost issue, it's a community.
Correct.
Concern over the environmental impact of the amount of salt we have been using on the roads.
Yes.
Okay.
Um the other thing is, um moving to the. For the locations that have dumpsters out in town, a once a week.
Yes, we do need to talk like that.
Uh. Yeah, I put a post out on Facebook, um main thing out of that post was. Every time, especially it happens in the winter, most of the time, um when dumpsters are full. Or quote unquote full, um we get calls nonstop. It's about once a week. Um with the staffing that we have currently and the jobs at which our staff. Uh does throughout the winter, not only does our solid waste crew do solid waste. Um but they also plow, and we also only have one driver right now, um for solid waste. Um which is our supervisor, Mike, who is the only one who has a CDL to be able to drive the truck, um so we are. Committing to once a week for everybody, um larger locations might get picked up twice a week. Um but the main bulk, it will be once a week, um please try and refrain from calling us. So frequently, we do understand we're trying our best to get locations picked up timely, efficiently, and as frequently as we can. Um. Most of the time, large locations like Town Square, Conference Center, the Mountain, Golden Eagle, and Black Bear all get picked up Monday or Tuesday. Just depends on what the weather is like, you know, at that time, and if that crew was here the night before.
What's been done in the past, may I ask?
Well, the backstory is we're short, we're down one person, that's.
Well, I understand that. We also have somebody who has volunteered to help the town, who has a CDL license.
Right, to resolve that problem.
That would resolve that issue almost immediately.
And it's still a part-time thing, so.
And. I was wondering if this had been cleared with the town manager. Before being posted out on Facebook. I really don't appreciate. Just finding this out via Facebook posting, to be honest with you. And I think it says in your Facebook posting, don't bother to call. Which is. In my mind, I didn't find that to be something that would be appropriate coming out of our town here.
So I think, I think the question here is, um this was a surprise, I think, uh uh to the board. Um I am having difficulty with once a week, uh. And I'm struggling to find another way to deal with, obviously, we need to get another person as soon as possible, as Dan mentioned, and maybe somebody. Uh who we could hire rather quickly, we need to, and I have talked to Steve.
Steve and I.
About this as well.
Touch base, and just haven't.
Okay.
Caught up at the appropriate times to be able to touch base with them. It still is the plan to. See if they are still wanting to, um and if they are still wanting to, utilizing them within the department.
The. I, I just wonder what other options there may be, because. Uh for example, in my mind, having fewer hours or one less day at the transfer station to free up somebody. If that's how that would work, is a less of a burden on the town than um once a week pick up dumpsters. Have you looked at it, then that, and that meant, I don't know, Wendy, what, what you think about, I'm trying to think of other options. Once a week is gonna be. A, a difficult.
Station doesn't have CDL. The only person who has a CDL is on the plow crew. So.
So that, that is the actual hinge point.
Is, yes, is.
So the person who runs a transfer station can't do the plowing?
They are also still doing the plowing. So we utilize everybody within the department to plow, even utilize our mechanic who. Works on, you know, trucks during the day, who can't plow during the day, so we are utilizing transfer station attendants to plow.
Right, but for weeks when there is not a snow event, then multiple pickups should be fine.
Hmm.
Um. Was there just?
Comes down to the issue of when there are significant snow events.
Right, was there discussion of additional dumpsters at any locations to help alleviate that stress? I know that means a greater to pick, amount to pick up later, but at least there'd be a place to put.
The dumpsters that are at the locations currently are what can fit at the location. There's nowhere else to put other dumpsters at other locations.
I understand, within the parameters of the select board ordinance, but if the select board were to. Decide that extenuating circumstances that, that structures could be outside of the enclosures, that that's something that would be worth. Looking at.
We just have to talk with the, the properties and see where a dumpster could be included, if one could be included.
Hmm.
So.
As I view this, this is an important responsibility that we have for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Which is.
Sure.
The, the emptying these dumpsters is quite clearly. They do get full, there are periods, certainly like right after Christmas in particular, where, you know, everything is everywhere, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is not something. Um, this is not something we should be shirking our duty on in any respect.
Yeah.
I think it's an effort to try to deal with a.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was, one question, we have an open requisition for a person, correct? When was the last time any action was taken to try and actually get another person in here?
A month ago.
A month ago.
Yep, the only applicant that had potential lived in Mass and they wouldn't be able to get out here, move out here, um, until the spring.
And what efforts are ongoing today?
Um, I don't have access to refresh the Indeed post, so I don't know if it is refreshed or not, um. We've also tried to poach, we've tried to poach, um, Casella drivers and other outside.
Do we post on the state unemployment site?
Uh, I don't know, I don't post any of my jobs.
Yeah, I think that's.
The point is, we need to make a greater effort to fill these positions. Wendy, this has been open for a long time now.
But there is a, there is a very real problem of trying to get, trying to get workers that suffer from that and
Yeah.
Sometimes it comes up and bites us in the behind.
I'm cognizant of that, but I'm not sure that we're making the appropriate efforts.
Okay.
Um, and then there's applicants we've talked to, and then we stress that this is a, you will be working with trash twenty four seven, and it's a, oh, well, I'm not really interested in that. So, yeah, applicants that have come in, that would be fruitful, the department, I'm, not only me, but Mike, our other, our C, our only C D L, our supervisor, has also talked to, and this is where we are currently at.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so where we're currently at is, we're gonna maintain the usual slash normal schedule. However, there could be times, periods where because of plowing duties, uh, you will have to push the, the pickups.
Push back one day.
A day.
A day.
And, and, and it could have an impact, the worst thing would be obviously if that happens during a high volume weekend or Christmas, what have you.
Murphy's Law.
Murphy's Law, yeah, that's what you always gotta worry about.
Large holiday events, we try and clear up the entire town, so everything is emptied right before the holiday, um, comes, so obviously next week, we're hoping to have everything picked up before Thanksgiving, and then the same thing will happen before Christmas.
So I, I agree with Dan that this is a really important issue, uh, for the town, it's one of those visible issues, I think that, uh, that you and I have talked about things that, you know, the visible sorts of things that, so you don't get those, you know, the phone ringing off the hook all the time, trying to prevent that, uh, situation from developing, I wonder, uh, if, uh, we have a, a select board member, perhaps Wendy, work on this with you and Steve?
She's some part of the M S W group anyway, it would segue into that, and, and also understand Town Square and how that works.
You got that and that, let me just finish this, I'll get to you, Tim, because, um, yes, I mean, Wendy has, she's on the, uh, the, she's the, the select board rep on the municipal solid waste, uh, working group, I guess we call it, not a committee, she also has extensive experience with commercial dumpsters.
Yes.
And, uh, one of the big issues that this group, this commit, this working group is having to deal with is how much longer can this system uh, continue to operate as we continue to develop this town and have one trash truck and a small number of people, you know, multitasking things, and that's one of their big questions that they're dealing with, so the data that you're collecting for this could be very helpful, so I'd like to see. I think Wendy, if you'd like to take it on.
Yes.
And we'll move forward and see what we can do, yes, okay, great, Tim, you had a.
I just wanted to offer, we, we have ran C D L programs for our bus drivers, and you've mentioned is our C D L trainer. Um, he's still ran a program this fall, but I don't know how much longer he's gonna be running programs, but if there's anything we can do to help train up some C D L drivers.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
For the willing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other assistance we can get?
Thank you.
Good.
You don't have any C D L drivers who wanna do a little trash truck driving on the side?
Yes, yeah.
That may, that may be a, again.
Included in one, so I, I might be a side Jake Giffrey too.
Build up that money to pay off those Christmas credit cards.
Exactly, oh no, Ross and Poop Pals.
Oh, right, oh, there's that.
College tuition.
Alright, so I mean, there may be other approaches, and I think, uh, thank you, Tim, for your, for your input in that, Wendy, if you could work with, uh.
I mean, we definitely, the department are feeling the loss of an additional person, I mean, it's not that we wanted to go down to once a week, it was just something that.
I think, I think we understand that, yeah.
Yeah, I think I understand your effort was just to educate people that it might happen as of, with the weather and.
Might have communicated that for me.
Okay, that's.
It, it can happen easily in social media.
Yeah. As a rule, social media is.
Let's go to social media before we're notified, to be honest with you.
Right.
Agreed.
Ever.
Yeah, agreed.
Anything else, uh, for D P W, you'd like to?
No, um, other than, big meeting, probably in December, um, it's hopeful that Ashland will present their incinerator again, um, and if that's the case, the Camby Baker um, district is looking to write a letter of support, um, stating that the Ashland facility would have quote unquote fuel or trash to be able to utilize the facility. So.
That's interesting. Okay. Anyone have anything else with regard to the report or any other questions? I had a couple other things for D P W, I can do it under board concerns, or we can just do it now?
Oh, you can just do it.
Do you have anything, I just wanna make sure it was.
I don't have anything.
That, that, she's, that actually was in the report, where I freelance a little bit, um. We have the new signs at the corner of Snow's Brook and, um, Boulder Path.
Yep.
And the Snow's Brook sign goes the, both ways, but right across the street, it says Valley Road.
Right, so we bought a new bracket, um, and we're trying to make sure that it works first, uh, to be able to put the Valley and Snow's Brook together on one side.
Okay, great, glad, thank you, I'm glad you guys are, uh, working on that, the other thing is, I don't know if, if Mark ever mentioned to you, but uh, the directional sign you have here in, um, on our campus isn't our colors, aren't our colors, the red and blue. It should, it should be signed as everything else, I think, is, is signed, you know the sign I'm talking about, you know, right down here, yeah, so.
Pretty sick red, so I tried to keep.
Right.
Public safety is red.
If we can go to the town, well, whatever, yeah, exactly what, everywhere that town.
Yeah.
The one that's right at the bottom of the, of this little hill here, it's red and blue, yeah, I think I've already been approached on, on that, so. I think that may have been, that was just two things. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anything else? Dylan, anything for water or wastewater?
Thing I would add is that we started pumping sludge, so if there's anyone that notices that order, that it will be fine. So that should, that should wrap up in less than a week, um. We, we bought a new home a couple years back, and it changed the capacity by quite a bit, so couldn't take too long, uh, just doing, being short staffed for a while, continued being short staffed, but even more short staffed, um, we had to push it back a bit, and that, this was like as soon as we could get to it, so.
Okay.
And this is going into the drying bed to be able to be great.
It was one of those, of course, yeah.
It is a good time of the year, yeah.
If it gets in, it's a problem. Alright, and administrative services, uh, Kristen, did, uh, Steve mention anything to you with regard to
No, there'd be anything.
Administrative services?
I gave you this leniency letter that I have.
Yeah, so let's, let's talk about, yeah. Let's talk about that now.
The leniency letter that I gave you was an example based on the ordinance that already exists on the town books for water, past due water and sewer. And the statutes tell us that we can collect after ninety days of leniency, if we give them a letter, certified letter of speeding that they must pay or there'll be a shut off of water, and there'll be a penalty of not being able to use the dump facilities, in fact, all they did is say bill. And I know that you have suggested in previous meetings that you wanted to follow through with collecting on past due water and sewer bills.
Indeed, yes.
My only thought is the loss of recycle center, like usually things are listed in a, in a escalating, um, you know, impact and loss of recycle center privileges or lien. It might, maybe the loss of recycle center privileges should be first.
Where you can't lean a sewer bill, but you can lean a water bill, so.
No, 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 I'm just saying that in terms of, you have a list of four things here, the, the penalties, yes, thank you, severity, that's the word I wasn't finding. Um, maybe that should come earlier in the list, since you typically see an escalation.
And do we wanna say recycle center or, you mean transfer station, yeah, people are gonna say, oh, we're recycling.
Exactly.
Needs for the.
Right.
Well, we used to recycle.
Right.
We do still recycle.
We still do recycle.
We do recycle.
Not, we do industrial recycling, for lack of a better term.
Well.
Metal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I think it's good the way it is, I mean, we will obviously have issues with water shut off in a condominium, that's, that's not gonna be possible, but I think as a list of penalties you could be faced with, I'm, I'm fine with it, Dan, you have something you want to say?
No, I'm fine with it, I think it looks good, it's a good start, let's see what we can do.
Um, are we amenable to any kind of payment plans, should that be part of this?
I would be.
It says you can discuss on the back, you can express the kinds of plans, so they would just call.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
And this wouldn't go out until it was almost a hundred and twenty days past due, ninety, then thirty, and then they would get that letter. Um, and we would act on it then.
So when do you think the first of these are likely to go out, based on your view of the records?
Probably after the first of the year, based, give people to the end of this year to catch up. And actually, because we made a change on the tax bill, that has enough, that has other amount.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I will, yeah, I have a hundred and a.
I'm sure you have, yeah.
Cause I have to.
I tune that with some wording on the next bill, um, but it has made everybody aware that there are other um, amounts on their bill that are outstanding and they question it, which is good, because I get to talk to each of them.
Right.
And basically tell them it's, this one was just the water and sewer was so close to the tax um, bill this year, cause they came, one was late and one came early. Um, but it just alerts them and helps them to understand there might be some outstanding amount that they didn't know about, it could even be a dollar, but most people wanna know that, so they actually find it quite, everybody's been very agreeable of it, they did, oh, I just wanna understand it, so.
Yeah.
I've spoken with someone who is less agreeable about it, who had paid their water sewer bill and was quite affronted that they were charged a late fee and an assumption that they hadn't paid it yet, so perhaps when they're close, the water sewer should be on that.
So many of those this week and last week, um.
Inadvertently added the eight percent, right.
And they've all been very agreeable to have explained it to them, but some of them that had past due water and sewer that didn't know it, because it's paid either through escrow or a family member, um, it really helped them because they actually have paid, they've actually paid their past due water and sewer, they didn't know they had.
Right.
So, I've seen that, that drop down tremendously, actually, over the last two months.
But perhaps it shouldn't be like a within thirty days, if it's thirty, beyond thirty days, then it.
Kind of a weird thing, because our water sewer bill was late by one week, and our tax bill was late by one week, so they kinda crossed.
Right, and then the algorithm just added.
Date, so whether or not the account shows up as another. But we're actually gonna stipulate something like wording in there.
To help people understand.
Make them understand, yes.
Okay.
Right.
And also I've been directing them to the website that they can see that in live time, they see exactly what I see, and a lot of them didn't know how to do that, and I've helped, kinda led them there, um, and then that makes it even more, um, feasible for them to understand at any given time what their tax bills have, were, and have been paid, they can see their history, their ballots. So a lot of them, it's been a very helpful, even though the phones are ringing off the hook, it's, it's been very helpful, I think, for both sides.
Well, it's a new system, a new approach, and there're gonna be some, you know, some, uh, you know, gremlins in the process that, you know, will work out as we go through this and hopefully perfect.
Thank you for all the work you've put into this, I appreciate it very much, so, and tell Steve to pay his bill.
Okay, nothing else for Adamin? Good, alright, um. Well, we don't have Steve here to, uh, discuss the financial report, I don't know if either, either of you folks had any questions with regard to it this time? Wanna raise for the record here, and then we'll you can raise with Steve, uh.
Yeah, I, I, perhaps you know the answer to this, Megan, I had noticed that there is a block grant, Harry block grant, um, amount increase from last report to this, do you know what that was?
I don't know anything about it.
I mean, it's good, I like seeing extra, yeah, yeah, I was just curious.
On the revenue side.
Yeah. Um, okay, that was, oh, well, and police miscellaneous has jumped up nicely, was that something in particular, Dave? It was up like from four thousand to fifteen thousand? Put us nicely over budget. No?
Fourteen thousand to fifteen thousand?
Four, four thousand.
Four K to fifteen K. This is the last, yeah. Since the last report.
I, I don't have that, but I don't recall if there was anything that is probably something put in the wrong line, I'm guessing.
Okay, I mean, both nice things to see, I'm just curious.
Yeah, 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 I'll.
You can check on it and.
Yeah, I'll see a little closer.
Yeah, let Steve know the question was raised.
Yep.
Okay. And town manager, select board work plan, I mean, Steve did provide some more stuff on that, we'll just continue to review it, but obviously best to discuss it when he's here. Okay, we move on to calendar review. So there is a special planning board meeting tomorrow here at eight thirty, and it's, uh, to go over zoning amendments and, um, try to get, continue moving on that, on that, since there are so many. Um, they, Planning Board also has the continuation of its public hearing uh, on the Adventure Zone application, and that's on the twenty fourth of November at, um, nine A M. I would imagine that's, there will be another public hearing on the matter, uh, regular select board meeting in December, three P M here. And we're still aiming for eighteen December, five P M for the, uh, public hearing on the wastewater treatment facility.
What kind of a day is that, the eighteenth?
So, was it a Wednesday or Thursday, 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 Thursday at five?
Are we going to have a pre-meeting before that?
We could do that, yeah, I think we were planning on it. Um, our next regular meeting is on the fourth, did I say, uh, the third?
The third.
The third, so this would be two weeks, roughly two weeks later, so we can get a meeting in between, uh, cause we'll need time to finish pulling everything together.
The regular meeting would be on the seventeenth, which would be one day before, which is pending in the mid-tight, but.
Yes.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking, uh, the, right, not the seventh, I was thinking December third meeting between December third, and then we have the eighteenth, I know we have another regular meeting between the two, but I wasn't, I wasn't talking, no, we don't, can't do it a day before.
Right.
I was saying we can set it, December third meeting, we can set a time to meet uh, for, uh, a pre-meeting, if you would, or dry run, whatever you wanna call it, a murder board, uh, as it's known, as it's known in some circles, uh, at that meeting, at December third.
Yeah, I know it's hard, cause Steve isn't here, but have we talked about a date for budget to start? Cause usually early December, we set a five, a chunk, like a five hour chunk to talk budget.
I think he did tell me he was working with the department heads, which is the first step he needs to do.
Right.
But he's not mentioned to me a particular date, we can ask him, uh, I think, uh, Friday, uh, we'll be, we'll be all together again, we can ask him then, give us a little update on. I think uh Friday, uh we'll be, we'll be all together again, we can ask him then, give us a little update on. On that, Kristen, if you could, just give him a heads up, we're interested in the. His ideas for dates for, so we can get him on our calendar for our budget, our budget discussions. There's usually three or four, if I recall, minimum.
Maybe one or two, no, I know, there is a lot, yes.
Okay, board concerns and directives, anybody have anything they'd like to to raise?
Um I had a couple things. Also as a um update for the working group, the uh municipal solid waste working group met on. Tuesday, um and Becca has now officially joined, um replacing Rick Smith, as we. We voted about, um.
Same people, different hat.
Yeah, yeah, essentially, um we're working through establishing what the goals of the working group should be. Uh we'd like to increase education about what goes into a dumpsters, I think, you know. It it kind of goes hand in hand, perhaps with some of the difficulties that they're having with. Or perhaps it would help alleviate some of the issues if people aren't putting furniture in the dumpsters at condos. Or boxes are getting collapsed all the way, um you know, there are ways to help. Streamline, so the group is talking about how to educate folks on that.
Especially when we're having difficulties with.
Precisely.
The dates, keeping up with the trash.
Everything out, yes, um. And. Sorry, it's just, uh the other thing is the green cones, um. We've had a a couple out on the valley floor.
Yeah.
On valley floor properties that have been surviving, um and the group thought that perhaps it would make sense to. See if we could um. Have some, have an application process where if people were interested and had the ability to have the green cones on their properties. That they'd be able to apply and perhaps the town could subsidize. Um the thought was perhaps we could get up to ten people participating. The town could subsidize what costs, it'd be about a hundred dollars. Each cone costs two hundred, yeah.
Right, I think that was the plan.
Yes.
That's for composting or?
It's for digesting.
Right.
Um you don't actually use what what results from the green cone, you just toss your food in and walk away, so there's no turning, there's no.
Digest.
Whatever.
Meant to be like. Composting in the end.
It is compost, but it's not something that you have to like go in and turn.
Burn regularly and all that kinda stuff, but the idea is the same, to keep that out of the waste stream.
Exactly.
Yeah, I compost all of my organic stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Into my garden.
Just as we're talking about budget things, uh we thought that perhaps, you know, putting a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred towards this type of a program.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Both, you know, making it a prominent part of the budget and educating folks about it would perhaps get some folks.
Again, keep some of that stuff out of the screen.
They're about, um sorry, yay high from the ground, and then there's about this much that's buried, like a laundry basket buried. And then the insulated cone.
Okay.
It's it's very easy, you just lift it, put food in, I put a rock on top of mine, so the wind doesn't blow it open.
Sixteen, it's also, it's also easy for the bears.
We.
Well, thankfully, I haven't had.
I guess I was the only one in the test run that had a bear.
You're very close to bear country, I think it seems like the valley floor is a better area as opposed to.
Yeah, when you're up, yeah, they have more. They don't have to make much effort perhaps on the valley floor.
There's a lot of dumpsters, but they get down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, why waste time with the edges, right?
Yeah, anyway, so that was all I had for that, um.
If I could, just you just reminded me another thing, I did, I I failed to mention, mention on the pickup. Um we should also re-educate people, this won't work for the commercials, but if the dumpster is full, you got the transfer station.
Right.
It's not like you can just leave it off to the side, you know, I, there is, and it's open three days a week, so. I think that's part of your review of other, other things we can possibly do.
Yeah.
Um reminding people uh that for some reason, they can always come, just look at the dates.
Yes, oh, and the the other thing that we're under discussions, we had met, um well, Ira, Becca. Mike, Megan, Jen, and myself, excuse me, met with Brian Patno with the New Hampshire Recycles. Um earlier last week, yes, to try to get uh eyes on the ground as far as if there are any other ways for waste diversion. Um possibly recycling, the only thing that he suggested could work was single stream recycling. It would not be a cost savings, it would just be a waste diversion, we're getting, you have information. That's coming from him or that you had, I can't remember, but that will be coming.
For the cost from Castella. Yes, the the Fiselle, I don't know what the cost would be outside of that, I might work on to ask other people. Cost, if you whatever.
There's just something else to keep in the back of your minds for budget season approaching. Okay, I think that was all I.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Anything?
No.
Anything, uh just a quick update then on uh the planning board. Select board's ex officio position, uh there is a meeting, as I said, tomorrow, uh be just about zoning amendments. And I will continue to 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 work with the planning board on those, it seems to be moving along well, um. It's it's just that there are a lot of them, uh the uh next, uh there's also a meeting, a public hearing, as I mentioned. On uh the uh adventure zone application, it's scheduled for November twenty fourth. I've also, I've already registered my concern uh. From the select board, that we will not by then have an opportunity to review. The peer parking uh study that the so uh that the flick board, that the planning board asked for.
The review.
Uh the review and that um we, as in a butter, would definitely wanna have that and review it uh before any. Discussion, in-depth discussion of parking occurs, I've made that point. I'm not sure what is going to be talked at, talked about uh at the public hearing. But I don't think it's proper to talk about parking if we don't have an opportunity, and other, either a butters or a public. Let alone the planning board to have a copy of it, so I just wanna let you know that's, that could be an issue, I've talked to. I've talked to council about that, uh we'll be uh meeting with him on Friday as planned still. Um and we'll just see where we go uh on this from there. And that's all I had, I think, on the ex officio reports. Any, no other, any correspondence?
Correspondence, I received an email from Tim. Um with respect to comments I had made in the last meeting. Um regarding the the busing and trying to see if there was a way to work out some sort of a. You know, way of getting folks over towards the sledding hill and so forth. Uh Tim responded, very pleasant message back to me, um so I was. He sent me a message, I responded back to him outlining a few more details, just what I was thinking. He responded back to me that he had actually, I think, talked with the. Owner of the golf course and they had worked out some sort of an arrangement with respect to the busing and such. Um so I sent him a follow-on, thank you, just a very polite, short message. Um I thought it was a good interaction, I think it shows, you know, people working together, they were able to. Work together to hopefully help, you know, alleviate a little bit of a problem anyway that we've had. So I saw a lot of positive out of this, I think that's how we should be operating as a community. So you guys have the copies of the messages and such, so. That's where we stand with that, I don't know if Tim wants to comment at all.
Uh it was, the the issue came down to, we have a red and a green line. And the red line goes in the interior of the town, and the green line stays on the exterior of the town. And the parking lot stop that we had, the parking stop that we had was on the green line, not the red line. So we're gonna include it on the red line and the green line, which means both bu- buses will stop at that area. Craig's number one issue is is actually getting them back to town, which doesn't, we don't, really can't solve that issue with. The the way that the bus operation works, um but it's an ongoing conversation.
Yeah.
Why can't they get, I'm sorry, so there's a stop there, but they, people can't get back on?
They have to go all the way around.
Cause you go all the way around.
Yeah, it's a long way.
Yeah.
But it's a step. And I think progress begins with a step and so. You know, I appreciate what you've done, so thank you.
Right, anything else?
No. I didn't get any other.
I think we're done, alright, so I think we can move into non-public. Thank you, oh, I'm sorry, uh hi Kim.
Hi, great to see you all.
Hi.
Uh I just wanted to shout out two high school students that are here watching all of you for a civics project. And um so I, they they took a lot of notes, so it must have been a good meeting. And um I'm hoping I can connect with one of you um this weekend so they can interview. So um if anyone doesn't wanna be interviewed, uh let me know and I'll follow up in a different way. Um but you don't have to answer that right now, while you're on.
No, I'm I'm totally fine, but I think I've already been interviewed once, so, but I don't mind. Yeah, good, she got my point. No, actually, I don't mind, I don't really mind, whatever. Thank you, thank you, Kim, pleasure to, pleasure to see you ladies here, thank you for coming, I hope you learned something from this. Alrighty, so uh thank you again, everybody, I think we're gonna go into non-public, I. Think we may have three issues, if I'm reading it correctly, I think Dylan wants to talk to us. Uh Megan wants to talk to us and we need to talk to her. And so I'm wondering if there's. I don't think all three wanna be for all, you know, for all the issues.
Push fast.
Save you toward.
I have plenty of time, so Megan can go first.
Well, I mean, Megan, do you wanna talk, do you wanna talk to what that, what others here or just wanna talk to the board? Alright, well. Yep, are we, well, are we off? I I did make a motion to go in on public. Second, all in favor, alright, I meant, are we off the uh? Okay, I assumed that was going on while I was trying to.